Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the State Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Department of Education, Secretary of State's office, and notice has been given to the State House Press Corps, the Governor's office, and the State Board Agenda subscribers. And as a quorum is present, this meeting will now come to order. May I please have a motion? Thank you very much. Board Member Berry may have a second. Thank you very much. Board Member Bennett. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I won't ask if there's any opposed. Okay. And now, we're going to adjourn to executive session. Whereas, in order to protect the personal privacy and to avoid situations wherein the public interest might be diserved, the Open Public Meetings Act permits public bodies to exclude the public from that portion of a meeting at which certain matters are discussed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that consistent with the provision of NJSA 10,4-12B, the State Board of Education will now adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. May I please have a motion? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Board Member Berry, may I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Board Member Shahada, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will try to be back here at 10:00 a.m. Thank you so much.
Remember that teacher who changed your life? You could be that teacher. New Jersey has some of the best public schools in the country with competitive salaries and valuable benefits. Be that teacher. Visit teachinspire nj.gov. Remember that teacher who changed your life? You could be that teacher in New Jersey. You'll help shape the next generation alongside a dedicated community of educators. New Jersey has some of the best public schools in the country with competitive salaries, valuable benefits, and a solid pension plan. So be that teacher. Make an impact. Teach, inspire New Jersey. To learn more, visit teachinspire nj.gov.
Si eres un maestro, probablemente has tenido a tus estudiantes decirte lo que les importa. Y para todos los que lo hacen, hay más que sienten así pero no lo dicen. No sabes cuántos, pero es más de lo que piensas. Porque has hecho más que enseñar, has inspirado. ¿Recuerdas aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Tú eres ese maestro para mucha gente. Teach Inspire New Jersey
¿Recuerdas aquel maestro que le cambió la vida? Usted podría ser ese maestro en Nueva Jersey. Unirse a la comunidad de educadores que ayudará a formar a la próxima generación. Nueva Jersey cuenta con algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país, con salarios competitivos, beneficios atractivos y un sólido plan de pensiones. Sea ese maestro. Deja huella. Enseña, Inspire. Nueva Jersey. Visita teachinspire nj.gov
¿Recuerdas aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Puedes ser ese maestro. Nueva Jersey tiene algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país con salarios competitivos y beneficios valiosos. Ser ese maestro. Visita teachinspire nj.gov ¿Recuerda aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Puedes ser ese maestro en Nueva Jersey. Te ayudarás a formar la próxima generación junto a una comunidad dedicada de educadores. Nueva Jersey tiene algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país con salarios competitivos, beneficios valiosos y un sólido plan de pensiones. Así que ser ese maestro. Hacer un impacto. Teach Inspire New Jersey Para aprender más, visita teachinspire nj.gov Si eres un maestro, probablemente has tenido a tus estudiantes decirte lo que les importa. Y para todos los que lo hacen, más sienten eso pero no lo dicen. ¿Recuerda aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Tú eres ese maestro para mucha gente. Teach Inspire New Jersey Si eres un maestro, probablemente has tenido a tus estudiantes decirte lo que les importa. Y para todos los que lo hacen, hay más que sienten así pero no lo dicen. No sabes cuántos, pero es más de lo que piensas. Porque has hecho más que enseñar, has inspirado. ¿Recuerda aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Tú eres ese maestro para mucha gente. Teach Inspire New Jersey ¿Recuerda aquel maestro que le cambió la vida? Usted podría ser ese maestro en Nueva Jersey. Unirse a la comunidad de educadores que ayudará a formar a la próxima generación. Nueva Jersey cuenta con algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país, con salarios competitivos, beneficios atractivos y un sólido plan de pensiones. Sea ese maestro. Deja huella. Enseña, Inspire. Nueva Jersey. Visite teachinspire nj.gov ¿Recuerdas a aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Puedes ser aquel maestro. Nueva Jersey tiene algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país con salarios competitivos y beneficios valiosos. Ser ese maestro. Visita teachinspire nj.gov ¿Recuerdas a aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Puedes ser aquel maestro. En Nueva Jersey. Te ayudarás a formar la próxima generación junto a una comunidad dedicada de educadores. Nueva Jersey tiene algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país con salarios competitivos, beneficios valiosos y un plan de pensión sólido. Así que ser ese maestro. Hacer un impacto. Teach Inspire New Jersey Para aprender más, visita teachinspire nj.gov Si eres un maestro, probablemente has escuchado a los estudiantes decirte lo que les importa. Y para todos aquellos que lo hacen, hay más personas que sienten eso pero no lo dicen. ¿Recuerdas a aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Eres aquel maestro para mucha gente. Teach Inspire New Jersey Si eres un maestro, probablemente has escuchado a los estudiantes decirte lo que les importa. Y para todos aquellos que lo hacen, hay más personas que sienten eso pero no lo dicen. No puedes saber cuántos, pero es más de lo que piensas. Porque has hecho más que enseñar, has inspirado. ¿Recuerdas a aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Eres aquel maestro para mucha gente. Teach Inspire New Jersey
¿Recuerda aquel maestro que le cambió la vida? Usted podría ser ese maestro en Nueva Jersey. Unirse a la comunidad de educadores que ayudará a formar a la próxima generación. Nueva Jersey cuenta con algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país, con salarios competitivos, beneficios atractivos y un sólido plan de pensiones. Sea ese maestro. Deja huella. Enseña, inspire. Nueva Jersey. Visite teachinspire nj.gov Remember that teacher who changed your life? You could be that teacher. New Jersey has some of the best public schools in the country with competitive salaries and valuable benefits. Be that teacher. Visit teachinspire nj.gov. Remember that teacher who changed your life? You could be that teacher.
All right. Ready? Thank you. All right. Good morning, everyone. Happy September 10th. Welcome back to the fall. I'd like to reconvene, please, to resume the public portion of our meeting. Whereas, consistent with the provision of NJSA 10:4-12B, the State Board will now adjourn from executive session and resume the open session portion of our meeting. May I please have a motion? Thank you very much. Board Member Pena, may I please have a second? Thank you very much, Board Member Berry. All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you. Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I'd like to please ask, if I could, to have Board Member Pena start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. So, thank you again for coming to Trenton to be here for our public portion of the meeting. Welcome back. The State Board meetings are accessible to the public for viewing on the department's YouTube channel. I would like to advise you that YouTube provides readily accessible language translation options for closed captioning. If you are viewing our samocast at this time, you can use the settings option in YouTube for information regarding subtitles, automatic translations, and closed captioning in the multiple languages. Now, if I could go ahead, please, and ask for the approval of the minutes from August 6, 2025. If you could please approve of the minutes. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Are there any corrections or changes to the August 6 minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor and approving of the minutes from August 6, 2025, please say aye. Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Dr. Ricka, did you abstain?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. So, we have two abstentions, Director Shoner. Okay, thank you. Regarding our public testimony today, the State Board will hold public testimony on Chapters 9 Professional Standards 9A, New Jersey Education Preparation Programs, and 9B, State Board of Examiners and Certification, to align the chapters with recently enacted state laws and other authorizing statutes. In addition, our State Board will have open topic testimony today on any educational topic of choice. Further, this public testimony will be held at 1:00 p.m. here in this room and in the room behind us due to the State Board members needing to complete a professional development requirement today immediately following our State Board meeting. State Board Vice President Johnson, along with Members Mary Berry, who is replacing, um, thank you, Ron, who is not able to be with us today, Jack Farnaro, and I will hear public testimony today. For the month of October, our State Board will not hold public testimony as there are no educational topics up for discussion. We have three items for today. I'd like to please start by asking and introducing again our... Okay, there she is. Yay. Introducing our wonderful student representative today, Kailene DeRose. She's a rising junior at East Brunswick High School in Middlesex County. Her advisor is Bonnie Bencard. Are you here, Bonnie? Hi, thank you. Thank you very much for... She's amazing, so, great job. I understand that you have remarks that you'd like to share with us, please, and we're excited to hear from you.
Yes, thank you, President Goldenberg, and good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As school starts across the state, many New Jersey teens are saying goodbye to summer activities: hanging out with friends, summer camps and courses, and of course, sleeping in. When schools are closed, teens typically fall asleep and wake up later. Now, this may initially be attributed to laziness. However, the true reason lies in biology. Humans have a natural 24-hour clock that keeps our bodies regulating on a healthy cycle to make sure we get enough rest at night. Known as the circadian rhythm, this cycle is guided by our brains, but also light, temperature, and hormones. According to Better Health from the U.S. Department of Health, as teens' hormones shift, their circadian rhythm shifts. So, they get tired at later times and naturally sleep in later. However, most middle and high schools still require teens to wake up earlier for their classes. When this is paired with extracurricular activities, homework, and part-time jobs, sleep deprivation in teens becomes more common. New Jersey is on the lower side, with about 77.4% of teens not getting enough sleep, according to the CDC. This number is 84% in Pennsylvania. Sleep deprivation is serious. Not only is it a hazard while driving, but it impacts teens' mental well-being, increasing their risk for depression, anxiety, and low self-esteem. Worsened mental health can lead to worsened performance in schools. According to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, 49.5% of adolescents have had a mental health disorder. One ways where schools found their place is in adjusting start times for their secondary schools. The recommended start times for schools is about 8:30 a.m., according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. Many schools have shifted their start times for high schoolers to later hours. Later start times for middle and high schools are correlated with better grades and attendance, improved mood, and less car accidents. New Jersey still has room to improve. The state is currently on the earlier side of school start times in the nation, averaging a start time of 7:51 a.m. since 2017. However, many local school boards, including mine of East Brunswick Public Schools, have made a change: starting high school at 8:00 a.m. rather than 7:26 a.m. Local school districts have had the chance to follow larger patterns in states like California and Florida who require later school start times on the state level and continue to be pioneers and change. Adjusting school start times isn't simple. It requires adjusting times for staff, transportation, sports, and possibly major changes to parent schedules. All of these have a larger impact on single-parent households. These changes have dismayed school districts from adjusting their start times. However, and with dedication and planning, school districts can find resolutions that fit their needs. This is where the power of students and boards of education come together. I encourage everyone to look into these statistics and reflect on their school district. When school boards make changes like these, they take more into consideration about the lives of the many teenagers they serve. Similarly, when students speak up and represent what they see at school board meetings, they shine as leaders who aim to positively influence their community. It's not controversial to state that teens need to be getting more sleep. Schools across the nation are making changes to ensure students' lives fit their circadian rhythms so they can continue extracurriculars, jobs, and sports while remaining safe. It's essential for students, parents, and board members to work together to find plausible solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Certainly, thank you.
I just want to thank you for pulling this together. This is a really important issue, something we've been discussing in New Jersey and nationally for a long time. The statistics you pulled together, this is really helpful to continuing that conversation. And I don't want to make light of it, but as a parent with two young children, this idea of sleeping in sounds fantastic. So, I think if we can all get on board, it's good for everyone. But, really, really well done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mary Berry, would you like to speak? Thank you.
Caitlin, thank you. You know, I think you're on the pulse of a lot of what's going on, and I think it is really important that kids are getting enough sleep. You talk to a lot of people, Caitlin, and I would like to know if there's any communication amongst your peer group about the use of devices at night when it's time to go to bed? Because you're, you know, talking about circadian rhythm. I think it's something that we should also start looking at is, when kids are going to bed, do they have devices right by their beds? Are they using those devices right as they're going to sleep? Are they getting really good rest? So, I'd love to see you start to include that even in your study because I think it's important. We want to capitalize and maximize our young people. So, I would like you to, you know, hear what you have to say about that particular piece also. Kids getting good restful sleep as opposed to just being in their bedrooms.
Yes, that is also another thing. With the circadian rhythm, as said prior, it's connected to light. And of course, light from screens will impact that and can mess with the circadian rhythm. Now, of course, our lives are always filled with screens, whether that's with work or of course, more social. But when it comes to phones, I will say, I know from my peers who definitely use their phones until later hours, whether that's checking messages or emails or browsing social media. So, it definitely is certain parts in a larger scheme, that is, the complex human body, and definitely seeing how schools can hopefully play a positive role in that and influencing that is beneficial for the future.
Thank you. I know my phone is going to start going off earlier. Put it away. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments at this time? We appreciate so much. If you have any other comments during our meeting, just raise your hand and I'll call on you, okay? Tremendous. Thank you. All right. We have an instructional policy committee that met on August 25th. Our chairperson, Vice President Johnson, is prepared to give a report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Instructional Policy Committee met on August 25, 2025 to discuss the overview of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards Review Process, excuse me, and the anticipated timeline for implementation. In the coming months, the committee will continue to meet for discussions of the seven standards, the content areas of career readiness, life literacy and key skills, science, computer science and design thinking, visual and performing arts, oral languages, comprehensive health and physical education, as well as social studies, with an expected adoption during and adoption and revisions during the spring of 2026. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like very much to acknowledge the 2025's Mr. Tony Catani. He was named our National High School Principal of the Year, and he emanates here from New Jersey. And I'm so proud of that, I can't even tell you. He, he has been working at Lanape High School in Medford of Burlington County, my home county, for the past 18 years. I've always, I just am so proud to share this wonderful news that he won nationally. And it's so important to us to have New Jersey leadership shine and be out there in the country showing how exceptional our, not just teachers, but also our administrators are, how well that they're perceived, and all the wonderful things they do for our student bodies. And so, a huge Catani from the State Board of Ed directly to Mr. Catani. So, I know he's not here today, but bravo. And now, I'd like to turn the meeting over, please, to our Commissioner Damer. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. We do not have any commissioners' reports this month, so we can move right into the items for consideration. The first of which is for appointments. And today, I present one candidate for appointment. That's Ms. Rashida Garcia. And that is for the position of Superintendent of the Katzenbach School for the Deaf. And that position reports directly to me as the Commissioner of Education. So, with that, I will turn it back to you, President Goldenberg, for a discussion.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We had the honor of meeting with her in the executive session and getting to ask certain questions and share her path. questions and share her passion and ideas that she has for the new position. I would like to please ask at this time for a motion for Rashida Garcia to become Superintendent of the Katzenbeck School for the Deaf. May I please have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Board Member Berry, may I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Board Member Bennett. Are there any comments? I mean, I'll just say again, her passion exuded such confidence in bringing this school to everything it could become, and we're so excited, but are there any other comments or ideas at this time? Hearing none, we've had a motion, we've had a second, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good, thank you. Any opposed, please say nay. Are there any abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay, thank you. One abstention, all those in favor have said it, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. Now -- Yay! Congratulations.
Congratulations, Rashida. So we're now ready to move on to Item B, Certification of School Districts. So I'll invite Ambrose and Robert Gregory to come up. Since the August Day Board Meeting, the Executive County Superintendents have finalized 61 NJQAC evaluations. Of those 50 were full reviews, and of the 50 full reviews, 35 of these districts are recommended for certification. As I mentioned, Ambrose is here for any questions. Within your packet are the list of all of those 35 of the 50 that are recommended for certification. And I'll turn it over for any questions.
I think it's wonderful that we have 35 districts that are now ready for certification. I know the question always comes up with the ones that didn't quite make the mark, and I suspect we're working closely with each of them.
Absolutely. And as you know, those districts choose the instruction and program, so working through the county offices to provide professional development for the staff and to enhance those areas of weakness, yes.
Thank you very much, Assistant Commissioner Duncan.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions at this time? Yes, ma'am. We're delighted.
Yes.
So was there a common weakness that you saw with school districts that didn't pass the certification or weren't qualified?
Yes, a very good question. Typically, it's the performance in ELA, English Language Arts, and math, and those are the areas that we're targeting to work with school districts closely through the county offices to help improve pedagogy, professional development, and alignment to the standards.
Okay, thank you.
Great question, thank you.
Okay. Hearing no other questions or discussion at this time, may I please have -- did we do the motion? No. May I please have a motion to accept the certification of the school districts, the 35 school districts, which I just think we should mention. Do you want to? You should read. Yeah, they achieved it. Absolutely. Making them work today, I'm sorry.
For those that couldn't hear, the Commissioner, or excuse me, the Board President asked me to read them all, so.
Really taking advantage here.
I'm ready. Carlstead East Rutherford Regional School District in Bergen County, Fair Lawn Public School District in Bergen County, Hallworth Public School District in Bergen County, New Milford Public School District in Bergen County, Northern Highlands Regional in Bergen County, Ramsey School District in Bergen County, Ridgefield School District in Bergen County, River Edge School District in Bergen County, Rutherford School District in Bergen County, Wallington Borough School District in Bergen County, Borden Town Regional School District in Burlington County, Burlington Township School District in Burlington, Del Rand Township School District in Burlington, Mansfield Township School District in Burlington County, Northern Burlington County Regional School District in Burlington County, Milford -- Mil, excuse me, Milburn Township School District in Essex County, North Caldwell School District in Essex County, Roseland School District in Essex County, West Essex Regional School District in Essex County, Manasquan School District in Monmouth, Denville Township K-8 School District in Morris County, Madison Public School District in Morris County, Mendham Township School District in Morris County, Ocean County Vocational Technical School District in Ocean County, Bloomingdale School District in Passaic County, Lakeland Regional High School District in Passaic County, Wayne Township Public School in Passaic County, Mannington Township School District in Salem County, Salem County Special Services School District in Salem County, Somerset County Vocational School, Vocational and Technical School District likewise in Somerset County, Somerset Hills Regional School District in Somerset County, Sandiston Walpack Consolidated School District in Sussex County, Sparta Township Public School District in Sussex County, Stillwater Township School District in Sussex County, and Lopatcongs Township School District in Warren County. And all those pronunciations were 100% spot-on for a non-New Jersey native, I just want to point that out.
Bravo! All right. They worked hard to get there, so thank you for giving them that. We have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, may we please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments at this time?
Just real quick, next time, I hope the 26 districts that were below get their names read, because you did such a great job.
Amen.
That's here for the 26 that are going to make it next time.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay at this time? Any abstentions at this time? No conflicts of interest? Awesome, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Commissioner, thank you. Okay.
Moving on to Item C, Resolution to Approve Appointments to the State Special Education Advisory Council. Today, before the Board, we have a list of new appointments to the New Jersey State Special Education Advisory Council. Under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, each state must establish a state Special Education Advisory Council, whose job is to provide input on the provision of special education services to students in the state. In accordance with state law, the Commissioner of Education appoints members of this, with the State Board of Education approval. The council is mandated to reflect the demographic diversity of the state and include individuals actively involved in or concerned with the education of children with disabilities. Today, I'm pleased to present the appointment of four new members. The request for appointment includes Joshua Carlani, Carrie Walsefer, Lori Lopez, and Christina Badiato. And Kathy Ealing is here to address any questions you might have about those individuals on the committee.
Are all of them new members for this, or are --
These four are new members, yes.
New members, thank you.
They each serve for a set period of time, and so we do need to replace some of our leaving members.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no more questions at this time. Yes, ma'am. How many are parents?
I believe there are a number of parents. Kim Murray is in the room, my Director of Special Ed. I don't know that off the top of my head.
You know Kim?
I'm sorry.
How many are parents?
Here, I think 60% are parents. In this group, three of those four members are parents of children. Thank you.
I think, because there's a, each position is a specific --
Required.
They have a background, whether an educator or a parent.
Correct.
So we're meeting those requirements.
And some people serve multiple roles.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All this, do we have a motion? Please, may I ask for a motion from the Board?
So moved.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. May I please ask for a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Any further questions or discussion at this time? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Conflict of interest at this time? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much. And now, I believe that we've done the business on the agenda. We do have professional training for the board members, so we will call this meeting at an end. May I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Board Member Pena, may I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Board Member Shawta, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. In our open topic and the subjects mentioned, we will go through that with public testimony starting at 1:00. Thank you very, very much. Thank you for reading.